That particular example, or report that took hours to do now takes five minutes and a couple of clicks of a button. That's very important because they're trying to meet the needs and the expectations of their board members as well. The strategic theme is using technology to improve resources. And the next aspect you're going to see is something called Docklink. Docklink is a web-based system that we are designing ourselves. It's very similar to the Hinkle system, which is the state-supported system, in which we can take a multitude of data from villages, townships, and others to implement this custom system to reduce clerical errors. It allows for 60-plus political subdivisions to have access to information as well. Let's go ahead to the next couple of screens because I just want to mention some of the resources. Within Docklink, you will also find training materials and information that will be helpful for others to prepare their own financial report. So this visual of all of the paper will be reduced to immediate access with Docklink. The next strategic theme relates to improving technology for lot splits, which is very much connected to work that is being done in Fairfield County relating to housing. I'm going to say thank you to Holly Maddie, who's been a strong participant in the work group for the lot split application. Think about it this way: You might, for the first one time, only be required to split a lot, and this happens between 500 and 700 times a year, but you're going to multiple different agencies, multiple different departments, and not knowing exactly which way to go. We're going to own that process with real estate assessment, we're paying for it with real estate assessment funds, having a software application so it can be done electronically, at the same time improving the services. Again, we are able to do this for those that we are serving so that the process becomes more empowering for them. The cost of that particular service is about $65,000, and we've already negotiated a second application because we're aware that there are always going to be other related real estate assessment applications. And a word about employee assessment and tax: We have very good coordination with the Treasurer's Office and other departments, and we will have a sextennial update in 2025. In 2025, you'll be engaged in a number of different communications yourselves as well as we think about how we will be updating the valuation.
Could I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Remind me, after the 2025 sextennial, when would the results of that product show up in the property tax revenue?
In '26.
Okay.
2026.
Well, I just can never get that right, but I'll keep trying.
Just to always think, the tax year is one year behind the collection year.
That's what throws me off on that.
Yeah, yeah. Geographical information systems is directly connected to real estate assessment. Let me think about how we are participating in a number of priorities for the county. When it comes to law enforcement, we do have the 911 and the law enforcement enhancement systems, heavily dependent upon GIS, and that keeps costs down for the county. It keeps costs down because we're not paying for those particular services outside of the county with a contract, and it also keeps costs down for the city of Lancaster, as they share in that particular process. Transit and multiple other departments use GIS. And we're also working with multiple counties. You often hear me say, "I don't want to leave any other county behind because they may not have the same resources that we do." Another strategic theme that you're going to hear a lot more about as we move into the future and as part of our strategic plan is the use of artificial intelligence. That is something that is here to stay. It isn't something that we're going to be able to avoid, but we need to do it consciously and thoughtfully. We certainly aren't going to do that in a vacuum. Already, we use artificial intelligence with the hotel motel lodging taxes and with certain aspects of the sextennial update, particularly with new construction. But we do have certain elements that we want to keep in mind in terms of policy. We want to be engaged in that. And we have a list of those elements as well. But before we go into the list of the elements, I want to show you a real-life example about why we have caution. Because this gives a direction to artificial intelligence, such as create a picture of salmon in a river. You might get something like this, you know, salmon that's a fillet from your supermarket in a river. You have to really know how to prompt artificial intelligence and be able to code it correctly. And it's a great deal of skill in how you prompt it. And key elements, we want to think about the ethical use, think about security, risk management, AI governance framework, employee training and awareness. We're already having conversations about that in the Auditor's Office so that folks know that instead of replacing positions, what we're thinking about is ways that there is a tool that one can use to improve your ability to do your job. And then a rapid response recovery plan, as always, and very important to have as we think about multiple collaborations as we move forward with artificial intelligence. With financial stewardship, another strategic aspect and another strategic plan, we are going to continue our training with Making Numbers Count. I'm actually conducting some training for the State Auditor's Office next month and also for the National AGA Conference. We are conducting a Financial Leadership Academy, of which we have, I think, eight different folks that have applied to be part of the pilot group, very much looking forward to that. I see David Old here today, and I have to say thank you to Beth Seifert because she is a tremendous participant in that group. I've known Beth since about 1985 and have grown with her and learned with her, and she's a tremendous asset to the county and a tremendous asset to our efforts for the Financial Leadership Academy. And then we also have multiple leadership training and examples that we're doing. One thing that we're thinking about with our in-services, with our all-team meeting, is how the brain works and how we're prompting new actions and being innovative. As we think about actions that benefit the general fund, you know, I'm not going to read all these to you, but you know that we're very much engaged in that in the county auditor's office, and we've done a lot of work to increase the general fund balance. Monitoring legislation recommendations, we have homestead improvements. That is one thing that I think is going to happen and very much encouraged about that. Senior citizens should be able to stay in their home, veterans should be able to stay in their home, and we will see some improvements there. The owner occupancy credit, I do believe that that's going to be improved as well, maybe a little bit higher percentage or a different way to calculate that. Couple other things that are part of the recommendations for property tax reform include using an 85% rather than 90% of market valuation. It goes against appraisal standards, everything I've learned in the last couple of years about appraisal standards. But I always tell my appraisers and my certified appraisers that, you know, this might be a temporary thing, but it is something that we can work with in terms of whatever the legislation has passed. Using averages, that's what I'm not as keen about. Right now, if we were to average those valuations, say over three years, it might be good for central Ohio because we have increasing valuations. But if your valuations are decreasing and you average, your property taxes will stay higher over time. And not every county is experiencing the same thing as growth. So that's going to be something that you're going to have to really give a lot of thought to.
Homestead, except the state is working on increasing the income level, I believe it is.
Yes, that's right.
So have you seen any of those numbers? Do you think they're effective?
The association's recommended up to twice or three times the amount of the $36,000 that is there now. I do believe they're going to increase that, and they already have added like an inflationary increase over time. I really think you need to go a little bit farther than that to make a bigger difference. Yeah.
Substantial increase.
Not yet, but it is part of the reform recommendations, so we're quite hopeful of that one. Of all the phone calls that I get about property taxes, eight of the 10 relate to the homestead program. Eight of the 10 are from senior citizens who just say, "You know, I've been here in Fairfield County all my life. I just want to be able to stay." And new public value innovation plus efficient execution, that's how you come up with value. And one of the things that we're breaking out of that variable is how do you come up with innovation? And that's with structure and creativity. And we think about structure in terms of employee development. That's one of the examples that I began with. And I like this quote because you can't expect someone who's so closely connected with Ohio University, not to mention Tom Peters, at least once. So I think that leaders don't create followers, they create more leaders. And that's something that we talk about every Monday in our all-team meeting about, we all have leadership, and we all have expectations of leadership and leaders that are all level. Your packet contents include our strategic plan from '25 through 2030, the Docklink summary, which I am going around to townships to share the different training options that are available with that, our current organization chart, a summary of our property tax reduction programs, our Code of Ethical Conduct, the CAUV fact sheet, because you're likely going to get a few questions here and there about CAUV because it is CAUV season, then now statistics, reappraisal fact sheets, generations fact sheet, because we're thinking about ways that we're using the multiple generations that are coming together in the county. And I love that because you can see over time how technology has impacted the way generations are facing different challenges. In any way that we're going to be able to solve any big problems, we need every generation to come together. And then the last thing I want to mention is our interning, the workforce. A couple of years ago, we started a program called Interning the Workforce, and we began multiple internships with our GIS program. And the reason that we did that is because we saw that we would have a need for technical skills. And we didn't think that need would come about us as quickly as it did, but we've been able to face it by encouraging interns to be welcomed into the fold just as we would employees. We give them projects, and we manage them the same way, we welcome them the same way with the same expectations, we give them the same evaluations, we have one-on-ones with them. And now we have two interns who are going to be full-time employees with us, one from Ohio University and one from Ohio State University. And through this process over the last 18 months, we've learned several lessons about how to develop an internship program, and in your packet are those lessons in a short format. And both OU and OSU are sharing that with multiple other departments, both in the private and public sector, about how to create an internship program, so I wanted to share that with you as well. That's what's new.
Not only for the content, but the length of the delivery on a day like today, as always.
I took your cue.
And I will make one comment to your love of new technology, the StockLink, I think it's terrific.
We're really excited about the lot split application. Docklink is going to be significantly a change, a very significant change, but one that will help us avoid having to increase staff and also one that's going to help townships, villages, and those that may not have a great deal of resources to add staff as well.
Like, if you really don't have the resources, it'd be a lot better.
Very exciting. School districts are all over it. School districts are very sophisticated. They're very, very.
Dr. Brown, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our schedule is the opportunity for a public comment. If you would like to do so, please begin by stating your need, residential address. We do have a three-minute time limit today. We'll be a little bit tough on that one, given our schedule. Under those terms and conditions, is there anyone who would like to address the commission at this time?
He told me that last night. He told me that last night. I'm just coming with him.
I look forward to seeing you tonight. Those nice hard benches would be great for four hours. I know my back's going to feel fantastic after that, so I'll have something to look forward to. Hey, how you doing?
How are you?
I'm doing all right. Administration update. Annie?
All right. So pleased to announce that John Coe just recently applied for recognition from the Ohio EPA in their Encouraging Environmental Excellence in Communities program. And commissioners were recognized as a 2024 Achievement Level recipient for achievements in improving Ohio's environment through economic, social, and environmental sustainability projects and initiatives. They've got a nice little plaque. And John, this was specifically recognizing a couple of different projects, right?
Yeah, yeah, a couple, six-area projects, all tied to energy efficiency, the solar jet, all things that had culminated through '24.
John, I didn't want to diminish the recognition, but I think it is, if you submit it, you likely get it.
Yeah. Smidgen word, but it's just recognizing what you've, what you've.
Since we're talking about that, while we're moving along here, if you could do the one, the most recent month-over-month Harrison on the cost of electricity at that site. When I say month-over-month, I'm saying like compare November to November, December to December, not December to January, or something, right?
Yeah, we usually keep a 12-month running.
Yeah, so the most recent month?
Not, December is not a whiz-bang kind of month out there for a long time.
I get it.
Like a 12-month, 42.
Yeah, yeah. Well, look at that. Give us some data here in a second. All right?
We'll get you in here, perfect update if that's enough time for you.
Sure.
If not, we'll circle back. All right, but thank you, John, for submitting that and all the work that went into all of those projects. Appreciate that from you and the team as well. Next week, February the 4th, will be an evening commission meeting. We'll be here in this room at 7 o'clock. And just to make you aware of the future ones, there's four additional evening meetings in 2025. The first four will be in four weeks at the Greenfield Township Fire Department, and that's at 3245 Havensport Road in Carroll. And then on May 13th at the Wigwam and Pickerington, and on August 5th at the Rush Creek Fire Department, and November 18th at the Burn Union School Building. So trying to get out of the different areas of the county and appreciate those entities that are hosting us. I know that's a little bit extra that we're asking from them. Also wanted to make you all aware that we have worked with the city to identify three short-term parking spots out front on the street as tax payment parking spots. Thanks to John for getting that going with the city so quickly. So you'll see the traditional Service Safety Director signage out there on cones today, and we have ordered some additional signage that will be up a little bit higher, designating those spots. We know that other people may park there. We're not going to keep monitoring it or policing it. But there's just a number of folks that may have some mobility issues, trying to find spots to get in and pay their taxes, and so we wanted to just recognize that and make that a little bit more of a convenience between now and February 25th. So thanks, John, and to Kristi Nolan for working on the signage. Appreciate that. I also want to thank the county admin team for jumping in and providing coverage there at the front desk, especially during this time of the year. Tiffany Daniels, who was previously our employee down there, she had an opportunity to go work for the clerk of court, so she has moved over there. And so appreciate everyone, John, pitching in and doing what we can. Especially Corey has put Donna Staudter on loan from 8:00 to 10:00 every day with us, so we appreciate having Donna down there. That does help make that burden a little bit less for everybody. Highlights of resolutions: The review packet does contain a list of administrative approvals, and there are 21 resolutions on the agenda for the regular voting meeting, a few that I will point out to you. There is a resolution from the Auditor's Office to rescind Resolution 2025-01.14.y, which approved a memo received expense for GFS Fund 2599, reversing Fund 2018. That particular fund did not have sufficient funds to complete the transaction at the time, so remedying that. Domestic Relations has a resolution to authorize the repayments of an advance to the General Fund from the Justice for Families grant. Engineers Office has a resolution to approve a road usage maintenance agreement between the county and AEP for temporary access to construct overhead power lines. Appreciate Amy's work on that. Eric and Rochelle, a little bit to get that one over the finish line. Anything you want to add on that, Jeremiah?
No, appreciate all the help.
Okay, very good. Engineers Office also has provided a resolution to approve the 2024 Annual County Highway System Mileage Certification. 361,001.22 recorded miles of road in Fairfield County have been verified by ODOT. Is that any change from last year, Jeremiah, or is that?
Much, but it varies, you know, a half-mile here, a tenth of a mile here, once in a while. And I don't know why. I don't know if it's, you know, from one person to another where they put the spot on the map with ODOT, but that's what it is.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. And the Facilities has a resolution to approve a contract with Polness Building Services for the rooftop HVAC project that the Government Services building. I know, especially given the decent weather they've had down there, they'll be very appreciative of when that project is complete. Anything to add to that, John?
No, we're just looking about a spring install on that one with little impact to the building itself, but it's needed.
Wonderful, thank you. And Juvenile Probate Court has a resolution to approve a lease agreement between Juvenile Court and the city of Lancaster on the second floor for the City Annex Building at 123 East Chestnut Street.
Oh, tell us on that.
Yes, sir.
So Annie and I had a chance to meet with Mayor McDaniel last week. This lease was on the agenda or whatever for us to talk about. That's a bad lease, a bad rate. I want out of it. The city doesn't want us out of it for the same reasons. It's great for them. Price is too high. It's not a good situation for the county, so we're going to keep working on getting rid of leases that are not well-negotiated at the core prices, but that one's apparently going to hang on for a while.
And this agreement does, it is a three-year term, but it does allow for exits at the end of each of the years.
And that's why I'm going to get to it, get out of it, and, you know, it's a little bit complicated because we can't tell the judges what to do. We can just try to encourage expenditures that are more reasonable than this one.
The Sheriff's Office has three resolutions on today's agenda, one to appropriate from unappropriated in Fund 2394, another for an inmate housing agreement with Canal Winchester, and another to approve a service agreement between the Sheriff's Office and Violet Township for the continuation of equipment and personnel necessary to perform leasing services. Major Crimes has five financial resolutions on the agenda, and the Utilities Department has four financial resolutions authorizing fund-to-fund transfers. Art, budget update?
I'll be providing an update next week.
All right, thank you very much. Rochelle, calendar review and invitations received, please.
Thank you. The South Licking Water Conservancy District has a meeting January 28th. That's today at 3:00 PM at the Licking County Soil and Water Office. There will be an additional Ohio Power Sighting Board Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project Public Hearing at tonight, or this afternoon at 4:45 at the Pleasantville Elementary School. Invitations were received for the Canal Winchester Chamber Annual Awards Dinner. That is February 21st at 6:00 PM at BrewDogTap Columbus and for Friends of Fairfield D.D.'s 15th Annual Celebration of Possibilities. That will be March 26th at 6:00 PM at the Crossroads Event Center. The commissioners received the filing correspondence. The Lancaster Eagle Gazette published an article on January 22nd titled, "Does Mass Deportation Concern Fairfield County? Commissioners Talk Trump's Second Term." The Fairfield 33 Development Alliance sent a letter regarding contributions, stakeholders, and initiatives. Correspondence was received regarding industrial solar projects. And on a special note, to reduce the amount of records and to make access easier for the public, all reoccurring and formally distributed correspondence from county agencies and departments will henceforth be provided in the commissioner's folder of the same name. Those documents can always be, anybody that wants to receive any of those can always reach out to the commissioner's office, and we will provide them. That's it.
Thank you, Rochelle. That's all.
Lisa, how are you today?
I'm doing pretty well. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Would you like to share?
Yes. Our recording vendor has reached out and asked that he would host our Southeastern User Group meeting again this year. They felt that this was a very good space and a good location for the Southeastern District of Ohio to come to, so we're going to host that on February the 13th here. And we've got about eight counties that are scheduled to come, so that's really exciting. I was talking to someone from the Northeast District yesterday, and she said, "Oh, I'm coming to yours." So I'm excited about that. So just wanted to say that, you know, we're in demand, so it's kind of great.
Let me know and I'll have him thank you some cookies.
Thank you so much.
Don't want to come back, right?
John, John's coming to the meeting, too.
There's got to be reasons. That's the only reason. Hi, Jeremiah.
Sure, Davis.
So when one of the residents stood up last night, she said, "I had a private conversation," Jeremiah, about solar. I was like, "Oh, crap, what's next?" How you doing today?
Good, yourself?
Good, what's up?
So I remember one time when I was about 14 years old, my dad and I were at an archery tournament. We're outside, and wind hit, real, I mean, like 60 mile an hour started to blow. My dad spit this big old charl tobacco out, Commissioner Davis, and the wind caught it. It hit me right in the side of the face.
I like it so far.
And I never put, and I was tinkering with it. I never, ever put another chew at the back of my mouth. I'm sure you know why I wanted to tell this. That's all. Thank you.
There must be a reason. Thank you, Jeremiah.
Yeah, that's hard to follow up. Nothing other than Tiffany Daniels, your former employee, started with us yesterday, so she'll be working in the records division. So we're very, very excited to have her join us.
They've got the desk. And we're looking at that issue in terms of whether we're hitting all the right notes in terms of having someone there that can be informational, but also trying to decide whether that particular space could be made a part of the larger security plan. So I don't think anything's settled on that yet, but we're sorting on that. And, you know, I really like Tiffany and really hate that you took her.
She applied. I didn't steal her.
I know. I get it. And that's something that I think, you know, we just have to get right with it. Is when you hire good people that are doing a good job and they get good opportunities, you got to get right with that, you know? Just can't handle it any other way, so we miss her and wish her the best. Dr. Brown, how are you doing?
Still. January 31st is the deadline for dog licenses, so if you haven't gotten yours yet, it's time to get it. I'm saying you don't have to pay double the amount for that. Thank you to Brandon for serving as a satellite location. We could agree to, and I understand it's going very well. It hasn't been a tremendous burden, but it's been very big help to a number of folks, particularly those who like to be in person. I understand a few have even brought in a dog and shared a visit.
My staff members enjoyed it. They said it was cute little old ladies, is what they said typically. They came in, they wanted to pay it in person, and several brought their dogs in with them, so they thought it was fun.
Very good. Appreciate you. Helped very much. Also want to report that 1099s are done and have been mailed. Last week, we reported about WT's 1099s are done, and those will be received in the mail by all of our independent contractors. Tax bills were mailed yesterday, and the Treasurer's Office was on that, but they're on the website now. So if you want to look at your information, you can see that now. And you can also see the tax estimator tool in case you're considering some changes or have other things that you're reviewing. Also wanted to report some happy news. We did receive our fourth tech grant. And that's very unusual for an administrative office to even have an opportunity for a grant. I do fear that that might not have too many more rounds available to us, given it's Mr. Husted's main project relating to that opportunity. But we will have 24 credentials that we'll be able to receive from this next round, so we're very excited about that.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Tony, anything?
Rick, how are you today?
Good. So just looking at how through the Workforce Center, it's been going. Last, beginning last week, we announced that OU was going to offer a free lobotomy course for a grant that they had. And this is the second one they offered. On Wednesday, I was at our WEOL Youth Services Group where I announced that to everybody to say, "Hey, this is a great opportunity for everybody." When I got to the Workforce Center at noon, I was told that was already full. Three days, so.
Holy crap.
But so I sent a note back to everybody saying, "Oh, sorry. Forget what I said this morning because it's already full."
Let's talk about that lobotomy class for a second. So a high university gets a grant to offer the course, and I assume that grant covers the instructor. So those 18 students who signed up will pay X, Y, or nothing?
That's zero. That's for this grant. It's the end of their grant, but it's like last year. I will also pay for the testing.
Wow, so it's full, but.
Yep.
That's really good.
We had 15 students the last time, 14 of them.
You know what's really good about the lobotomy, and of course you get to test this? This allows somebody in healthcare to get their foot in the door. This allows somebody in healthcare to get their foot in the door and bang their corner even.
Yeah. Actually, Level 2 is because we're starting to get a hard time placing them. So we are going to secure network and bring a lot more healthcare employees into our home.
Well, Rick, I appreciate you for all the things you're supposed to do and then all the responsibilities that you accept beyond that. Notice. John?
Well, I thought it would be a little bit easier.
Okay.
But it seems like the net meter analysis tool in South Central Power is not working. But I did a couple months just for a snapshot. And so for your June to June, for about the same cost of electricity, you paid in 24 about $500 less. So we were able to generate, and that generation plus what we get is a credit, which was about $100 in that month. A lot of that able to come down $500 at the same cost of electricity roughly. That cost has gone up a penny since then.
Okay.
Around 10 cents right now. Obviously, December, not as great of a spread because not as much sun. But your June, July months are really, you're saving, you know, 40% on your energy bill in that period. And unlike a home, we only work during those peak days. So the sellback is really just the overnight, the evening hours, summer, when the buildings are hot.
Remind me, is the net cost on that 240 or 240 minus the grant? Or is the grant, did the grant fall off or what's going on?
The net cost was actually a little under two.
Okay.
Then you had a tax credit that we still filing. That's the first time we filed a tax credit. And once we receive that tax credit dollar, we'll have a total, you know, in cost locally. We're projecting with the account somewhere around 70,000. And then there's some fees offset from there. So we'll have that number pretty soon, I hope.
Yeah, what I'm interested in, in terms of this pilot project, is understanding the net costs, which I understand we're drilling down on, and we'll know more later on that. Understanding the annualized savings associated with producing the energy. And then using those two numbers to calculate the ROI. And then we'll make a prediction as to the future cost of electricity. Now, well, I would, I would come at that rather simplistically. I would take the last 25 years and make a very safe assumption that the next 25 years in terms of the increase in the cost of electricity is going to look at least like the last 25 years and probably worse in terms of the price. So you make that very reasonable assumption that even though we're putting everything on the grid, even though we're attacking all forms of production. I'm saying price is going to behave like it always has. Well, probably not, but we'll see. But you see what I'm looking at there? Because I think we need in the near term to kind of start getting our arms around that project and the analysis of that project so that that analysis can be used to determine whether it's replicable.
And a lot will come of the new tax credit availability. If we, if that, if this tax credit continues.
Right.
Then it does, the ROI is huge. But and I think that's going to be right, and I understand that.
But I also think that if the tax credit were to go away and we were to manage the next one in a more sophisticated way than we managed this one, the prices might not be so bad. And I'm not ripping on you. I understand what happened here, but, you know, wasn't an ideal situation for a contractor.
Yeah, there was some contractor difficulty. And there's availability issues that are coming to, they're turning around quickly with developers. US-made solar. The more US you can get, the more function we have, cheaper the price. Ours were Canadian.
Yeah. So just to put a button on that, I mean, as the Facilities Director, one of the issues that I'm concerned about is the $3 million plus in annual costs for electricity. And if there are things that we can do now to try to reduce those costs in the future, we want to. Because my personal predictions of the price of electricity are accurate, that number will be $10 million before we know it. A year.
It is supported. Palmer, Palmer says there is a, is a graph that goes that direction. Certainly, policy issues, everything that goes along with that. And, you know, Palmer Consulting is who CCA uses, and so they're looking at all this data over the five-state region through us. We're in the market to know that. And we do make those strides. I surprised Rick with a gas bill a smidge higher, but electricity bill that just dropped through the roof. When we replaced all of the HVAC, last year he was all electric heat, now he's all gassy. So a lot of numbers on that savings just in one, one climate cycle. It's going to be huge.
That was the most response. I was like, this can't be right. He goes, oh, no, it can be. Wait till you see your electric bill.
Yeah, so it offsets, but we'll continue to make those changes that we evaluate all buildings. We applied for some more grants, but that's a regional type approach, and we're not, we're not successful so far.
Dan?
Good morning. Just a couple of things to note. The badge access for Commissioners' Record Center is effective, so you get into that door. And certainly, if anyone has trouble with badges at any doors, please let me know. To the, towards the end of last year, we began contract with a cybersecurity product. And, you know, we are just now beginning to realize how effective, and we continue to be impressed with that organization and, you know, the things that we're seeing, such that we actually were made aware of one particular county staff person's account had a loan that occurred that was not legitimate, and it even bypassed the duop process that we have. So we were able to, you know, effectively disable that account with a very short amount of time and got that person back up. So it's just awesome to see these products, you know, get put in place and really make an impact.
Yes, and you can't discern intent, but I assume that was some form of attack.
Absolutely. Yes. Thank you, Dan. Hey, buddy.
Good morning. I just note that our annual child abuse prevention breakfast is scheduled for April 9th. It's scheduled to fill up quickly, so we just set that date and wanted to get it out there. We should be receiving the dates here. It will be at the March 14th. It's out on 37th.
Thank you. Under Old Business, Commissioner Lovey.
Well, last Thursday, we did our final 9/11 committee meeting. And John went there because he was some concert, I understand.
Here at the legislature took that.
So regardless, and of course, you know, I have some some insight in 9/11 and emergency response, so on and so forth. And I think we've come a long way. The reason I say that is, you know, the Sheriff's Office was strictly standalone at one time. Now, we have Lancaster. We also have, we have Violet Township and Pickerton involved. And to get from it, and although Pickerton doesn't necessarily use the same technology, but, you know, they just bought that, but their, the willingness is there to be all encompassing. So I would, I think a lot of that work is attributed to you, John, and actually bringing all the entities together because it's really important that this be done.
I mean, without the Commissioners' investment in the new CAD, none of that's possible. benefiting other communities, you know, that part.
But you still have to have people agreeing to do that, right?
Sure. And everybody's on board. That is the highlight.
So anyway, that, that new plan has been adopted, so moving ahead. Then Friday, Ani and I had an instant visit to Yellow Bud down in Pickaway in Ross County. It kind of straddles a little bit and look at an operating solar facility. So it was kind of interesting to see that. So good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just real quick on your old business, some folks know I had the privilege of going to a couple of the Buckeye Games recently, including the National Championship in Atlanta. I got to see some old friends there. Probably the funniest story was one night, one of the guys I was with is very fortunate, wanted everybody to know it, picked this really high-end place to go. So we went there, and we were having a cigar and a bourbon out on this patio, and I saw this gentleman over in the corner kind of keeping to himself, but he looked really familiar. And I thought I knew who he was, so I'm like Googling it. I thought it was Anthony Mackie of the new Captain America. So I'm, and he's smoking a cigar, so I'm like Googling, like, does Anthony Mackie smoke cigars, you know? A million pictures of him smoking a cigar. But anyway, so I go over to him and I said, since there you, I look like Anthony Mackie. And he's, not me. Probably get that a lot, huh? And he's, then he kind of winks at me and says, all the time, as he extends his hand. Long story short, it was Anthony Mackie. Once he realized we weren't going to make a scene out of it, you know, he got cool. And we were having a smoke and watching a football game and kind of talking about our bets and what was going right and wrong. So that was pretty cool. And then the next day, he was obviously announced at the game, and then my guys were like, because they didn't believe me. They thought, and he knew who he was. It's kind of fun, so. But really excited for the Buckeyes, excited for opening day next year, which is the University of Texas visiting Ohio State. So if you want to check those tickets out, they're already going crazy.
New business, Commissioner Lovey.
If I could just add to the Buckeye story a little bit. So, you know, the end of celebration of the championship at the stadium, and Coach Day and the Governor and Ginter and others spoke. But as Coach Day was talking, he was referencing Jack Sawyer and operating his boat on Buckeye Lake. Jack keeps it boated by Marina. And so I see him all the time in the summer. So it was really interesting that he referenced Jack and Buckeye Lake together.
That's good.
And I don't have any new business. And I will say this, I'm very much appreciative of Commissioner Davis willing to be the ad hoc representative for the Commission on the par siding board because, you know, it's a lot of set time, you know, it's going to be four hours last night, four hours tonight, and beyond that. But thank you, Commissioner.
Well, thank you. It's a it's a spot in position right now, but and a number of people have asked me to resign. So that would free me up, I guess, to take a position on this or whatever. I just can't do that. I've had conversations with people for two years, saying how I was going to approach the situation, what I was going to do and what I wasn't going to do. I think I'll just keep my word for understanding on that right now. As far as new business is concerned, did have the chance to attend a public hearing last night. I think they got through 80 or 81 speakers on a three-minute time limit. I don't know how many people signed up, but seemed like way more than that. So I don't know if from five to nine tonight will be enough. We'll see how that goes. But people were pretty, pretty respectful for the most part. I think the biggest applause line of the night was when a young lady suggested that Dave and I be thrown out. So.
I'll think about that.
Okay. You know, on a serious note, that argument's not going to work. But there were other arguments that were more intelligent than that. Any other new business, right, and come before the Commission? You got to stay down here, huh?
Yep.
That again? Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're right.
Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise if you are able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in the good soul of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
There are no announcements.
Move on to the approval minutes for January 21st, 2025.
So moved.
Second. All those favor sign of Lovey saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both same signed motion carries minutes are approved. Rochelle?
From the Commissioners, Resolution 2025-1.28.a, a resolution to approve a memo receipt in expense for stop-loss full subfund and self-funded healthcare.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Auditor, Resolution 2025-1.28.b, a resolution to approve to rescind Resolution 2025-1.14.y, a resolution to approve a memo receipt in expenditure for Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Fund 599 reimbursing Fund 2018.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Start.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Court of Common Police, Resolution 2025-1.28.c, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated a major expenditure object category for the Fairfield County Court of Common Police, Fund 2852, targeted community alternative to prison.
So moved.
Second discussion. I don't have a discussion on this particular resolution, but it reminds me, just to share with folks that County Administrator Cordell, myself, Clerk of Courts Brandon Meyer, Judge Vandervoort, Judge Behrens, and Judge Smith, perhaps others that I'm not aware of, will be meeting tomorrow at 1 o'clock to, I don't know if it's begin or continue a discussion about the Hall of Justice and its usefulness and serving their needs right now or lack thereof. I don't know. The walls had ears. I'd say they probably want a new building. Their walls have ears. They probably know I'm going to be a hard sell. But we're going to have a discussion about that tomorrow and just try to make sure we understand what the space utilization needs are and in what ways, if any, they're not currently being met. So probably a big deal to have that discussion, given the different leverages that are in play for different people with their perspectives. So that'll be a challenging discussion. Continue. Further discussion.
Cordell.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion passes 2-0. From Fairfield County Domestic Relations Court, Resolution 2025-1.28.d, a resolution authorizing the approval of the repayment in advance of the general fund, Fund 2848, Subfund 8284, Justice for Families Green Program.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Cordell.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion passes two zero. From Fairfield County Engineer, resolution 2025-1.28.e. Resolution to approve the road uses road usage agreement between Fairfield County and Ohio Power Company, a unit of AEP.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move resolutions E and F.
Second discussion. AEP has a large upgrade project going on and they're good about working with us as far as getting an agreement to make sure the roads are good. They're really good about getting all this stuff done, working with us up front. Yes, see this, I don't know how your records are kept. You may not either. I'm not being harsh.
What records we're talking about.
Yeah. But is there like a file drawer of rumors? Like that you can turn to and kind of as a starting point for discussing everyone? Have you done several in the past?
Oh. Our format we're using now, I would say we probably haven't done more than maybe five or six.
I mean, this is updated.
Yeah. And that's kind of why I said it like that. So we're still learning, but you know, right now, what we're doing, what we're getting on paper and agreed to seems to be working very well. Seems to be agreeable with people. So.
And this mirrors the Good Hope project of 2018. So it's a tri-terry.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Fairfield County Facilities, resolution 2025-1.28.g. Resolution to approve a contract for the HVAC install services for the GSB RTU project.
So moved. Second. Discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion passes two zero. From Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, resolution 2025-1.28.h. A resolution to approve a lease agreement for the Fairfield County Juvenile Court binding between the city of Lancaster and the Board of County Commissioners.
So moved. Second discussion. Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis? Motion passes two zero. The Fairfield County Sheriff, resolution 2025-1.28.i. Resolution authorizing approval of service agreement binding between the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office and the Township of Violet.
Under Fairfield County Sheriff, I move resolutions I, J, and K.
Second discussion.
Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. From South Central Major Crimes Unit, resolution 2025-1.28.f. A resolution, a resolution authorizing the creation of a new fund and appropriate from unappropriated for the violent crimes reduction grant.
Under South Central Major Crimes Unit, I move resolutions L, M, N, O, and P.
Second discussion.
Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. For Fairfield County Utilities, resolution 2025-1.28.q. Resolution authorizing fund-to-fund transfer from the Water Fund 5046 to Funds 5534, 5556, 5776, 5818, 5823, and 5849. Debt service payments for 2025.
Under Fairfield County Utilities Department, I move resolutions Q, R, S, and T.
Second discussion.
Please go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Payment of bills, resolution 2025-1.28.u. A resolution authorizing approval of payment of benefits for departments that need order commissioner's approval.
Nobody. Second discussion. Let's go to roll.
Commissioner Lovey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes two zero. Next regular meeting is scheduled for February 4th at 7:00 PM in this room.
Danny on the east side, if you'd like bringing the attention to the commission at this time.
Sir. Commissioner Davis, I just, I thought it was worth noting and adding to we also work with townships and we've included all the townships that are effective on that, on that group of two. So they're protected. They basically give us the authority to, to manage that forum. It's all a great thing. It keeps all levels of the rooms under the commissioner's watch.
All right. Well, I was thinking of that show with the girl offering. Anyway, any further discussion?
Motion to adjourn, motion adjourned. Second, all those favors in the office and I, I post same sign. Thank you for there is. Thank y'all for coming.